...in the future land use map and have been changed and will be asked to be changed later on tonight. And last year that were more or less things that were overlooked. Things that were deemed as a mistake, if you will. Now, I'm struggling with was this one overlooked? And what impact, if any, will this have on services in the school district? Because like I said, we went through this last year and it was, it was a storm. It was, to say the least. And it passed at plan commission and then at council, there were, there were fifty people at least that said what they want.
The party's making that worse than their benefit right now. Because they, same notices were sent out as it was in the case of Moss.
I agree, and I think there were-
And all these here.
It's not at council yet.
Well, even if I commissioned, they were there about seven years.
Not really. No, not really as much. I was probably allowed to step by commission. But, in any event, I'm intrigued. I think because Bill, you were, you were on Smart Growth and I kind of tend to, to look to you when I have questions with the, the plan itself. And what's your take of my big question?
This, this chapter, which is chapter seven, was future land use, took about four months. We just have to, for instance, we're talking about this particular property and I know Avery wasn't, I don't believe that they represented during this. I look at what they, what the Gilders were like at that particular time. Remember that? The screaming, the fighting, the walking out. Why? Because we didn't include them in the interim land use and such. And the Gilders would probably think that they're next in line and such. They, they got fourteen and everything. You know, we had to draw, you have to draw a map. You have to draw a boundary and that's what we did. It was a very tough decision where we would draw it. At that, at the time, everything we were drawing was pretty much what we had in net, in net at that time. Except the larcenagers, which just simply was connecting two, an extra piece of the property together and such. It was one of the toughest decisions we had. What, another thing I also make is fair to the Averys is they have property that's in net in the city of Evansville. And, and maybe we could change that particular portion to a walkable neighborhood. It's a true agricultural anchor. That was the, the thirty-nine blocks and then-
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six? And just that one?
The city law, seventy-six is in there, but depends on, I mean, the geography of that land is kind of extreme from the front. It's a little to the back.
Plus the walkable neighborhood, you get, actually get more density than you do non-walkable neighborhood.
Right.
And that's the theory of walkable neighborhood.
Right, Jim?
Exactly.
As long as we went back there, what, what do we see as an anchor in the walkable neighborhood?
Well, I, I think we, we better stay way away from commercial or business out there. We're in hell all the time just taking care of downtown. And I know that walkable neighborhood is likes to be supported by a coffee shop and services like that. I don't know, I don't see it done as well.
Isn't that the point of the walkable neighborhood is some sort of civic anchor?
Yes.
A vision of it, yes, but I think-
It wouldn't have to be a commercial-
It doesn't have to be commercial, I understand.
It could be a daycare, it could be a park.
Park. I, I think part of the anchor of that land is the land. You know, if you want something to draw the buyer. But yes, a traditional neighborhood should have some, traditionally would have some kind of public activity. Parking, you know, it doesn't have to be a commercial. And that may happen, I, the only, I think that could just spawn on itself. Whether or not the downtown is full or not, or the east side, appropriate business that we may not imagine right now could see that neighborhood as an ideal location.
Yes.
Just a real quick point, probably more pertinent to the next application. But on the interim future land use map, the Gilder property is shown as walkable neighborhood.
Yep.
So that's outside the city. And that would be developing first before what's in the city.
Right.
Okay.
That's kicking and screaming and yelling and home ball, right?
Well, I, I just want to point that out. If you have a question back there.
What, what stage is larcenagers at? It's, it's still not zoned, or-
It's zoned A.
It's zoned A.
Yeah, that's when we have a contract with the city that if we don't get to develop it, the city has to reimburse us costs because we paid for Porter Road.
Yeah.
And that was like a, I don't know, eight or nine year, well, when did that, two thousand maybe? Negotiation, because the city didn't have the money to pay to upgrade Porter Road. So the thing, we looked at the big pitch and we said, okay, let's look at the big pitch. What's it going to be over some period of time, which could be twenty years? And we, for the first time, looked at regional stormwater management. But we never did look at that management. We don't know what, I told Bill, those two were out of the, we had to get, looked at regional stormwater. So where is Larson at today? No plans. No plans.
Yes, I mean, is, is what, what has been signed as agreement? Is there anything about phasing in that or-
Oh yeah, we agreed all that already. And our, our master developers agreement, we agreed to, so, in fact, we volunteered, Bill, remember? We were the one that brought forward to volunteer to say, we want to control this whole. Now, there's, there's, it's market driven though. And, and I think Tony made the point, or somebody made the point, that I can sell my product, but I don't have that product. So the people that want every product, they're either, the closest thing is Grand Orch. And I think Tim points out, as the closest thing we have to something really unique.
Here's a, if I remember right, your agreement has to typically begin development after the year two thousand ten, like for instance.
No, it doesn't say that because it's thirty-five lots a year.
Thirty-four lots a year.
And, and it grouped it together to see, we have the right to leave, leave Ringhand and jump up to Larson's to have, have a different inventory of lots.
Okay.
But we can only do thirty-five a year on a rolling average of one oh five, not, not exceed one oh five.
Between the two lots, between the two subdivisions.
And the two subdivisions, one oh five rolling average, not, not exceed in a three-year run.
And, and the other portion of it is that there is a penalty phase in the city of Evansville regarding the pond and the road improvements. Do you remember how much that was?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I know, but the pond is substantial. And, and anyone that's been familiar, probably works the park and has been familiar with it, it is a huge improvement for us.
Correct.
Yes. Oh, yes. Okay, let's take a five-minute recess. Let me get up and move. Okay. He's reading, low water pressure area?
That's not in this part.
That's not in this part at all?
No, in the city.
That's in the-
That'll be in the township plan.
Okay.
The big cross from Moss is-
Well, there's no finger that's in the city, but-
That's nothing that engineer can do.
Okay, other discussion. Is there any other discussion? Now, we are discussing, and the motion is on the two parcels that are in the town of Union. That is what we're talking about at this point. Any other discussion? Okay, the motion is to approve Plan Commission Resolution two thousand seven recommending to the common council the amendment of the city's Smart Growth Comprehensive Plan by changing the land use designation of the subject property on the interim future land use map from agricultural undeveloped to walkable neighborhood. All in favor? Please say.
May I, may I have a roll call vote?
Okay.
And I would also just add that if you like Bill's idea of letting the city go in first before the town, then you'd want to vote no on this, yes on that one.
Okay, roll call.
Another plan again, how does that work?
What I just said?
Yeah.
If you wanted to not change the interim future land use map in regards to the parcels that are in the town of Union, but change it in regards to the parcel that is in the city of Evansville, as Bill talked about earlier before we went on break, then you would vote no on this one and yes on second one.
Okay, we haven't considered the second one yet. We're on the first one. This is the two town of Union parcels. Is everyone clear? Okay, roll call.
First off.
Yes.
Ron Troy. No. Deckers.
No.
Rooks. No. Skinner. No. Ammon. Required four votes and received two, so it's not a pass.
Okay, let's move on to seven D. Citizen initiated comprehensive amendment, Daria Everie applicant, application two thousand seven dash fourteen. Is there a motion please?
Motion to approve Plan Commission Resolution two thousand seven dash two recommending to the common council the amendment of the city's Smart Growth Comprehensive Plan by changing the land use designation of the subject property on the interim future land use map from agriculture slash undeveloped to walkable neighborhood.
Sir, second.
Second.
The motion is to approve Plan Commission Resolution two thousand seven dash two recommending to the common council the amendment of the city's Smart Growth Comprehensive Plan by changing the land use designation of the subject property on the interim future land use map from agricultural undeveloped to walkable neighborhood.
Maybe my thought that if we were going to vote yes for this, that we would use the developer agreement in order to phase this in along with larcenagers.
Other discussion.
Does the city have a current agreement? For the larcenagers?
Yes.
So that would have to be amended?
Well, I mean, along with, like, like similar to the larcenagers, I should say.
Is there other discussion?
I think that fairness to the Averys, since their land was already in the city and had a preliminary map on it, you should put it on the map.
Obviously, I agree with Bill on that.
Does that agree with the, that before the Smart Growth Plan? That should have been incorporated in the Smart Growth.
Correct.
Other discussion. If the anticipated number of seventy-six lots is added, we have seven hundred and twenty available lots in the city. That is not no growth. I, just to point out, that is not no growth. That is, we have about two thousand housing units. That's seven hundred lots. That is a lot and that is not no growth.
Yeah, that's also, I agree with the mayor, and that, but that's also quite a time period.
I understand that, but that is not no growth.
We've got seven thousand lots and that's that way even still.
That's, that's true, but to say that-
Yeah, well, that's the point right now.
But to say that the commission is no growth, that is not so.
Well, I meant the Smart, I would like to clarify, I meant the Smart Growth Committee was strongly leaning towards a no growth position.
But not, not no growth. Smart growth was never smart growth.
Yes, twenty-seven percent is not no growth.
Correct. Yeah, and I, when I was all the person, I believe, I voted for what amounts to, maybe at this, somewhere between five hundred and a thousand lots of growth potential, that's not exactly considered.
Well, we came away from it.
Personally. I was also on the Smart Growth.
Yeah.
And we, we never ever attempted to make it a no growth community, ever. Right. I mean, it was talked about and it was talked about slowing things down. Never no growth. We, we kind of went along with the recommendations of the survey that we sent out. And the, it was moderated, is what they, what the city, residents of the city kind of requested.
Forty-nine percent, Jeff.
Yeah, I am corrected. Yeah.
Forty-nine percent.
Yeah, and, and Roger, you know that there was, well, it'd be cool about people who are pro-growth and against growth. Committee, that's why these issues were so heated in discussion.
Because, actually, thirteen percent against no growth. The number's right there.
So the compromise was to continue the growth rate as consistent rate, don't accelerate it.
Other discussion.
Well, I just think that we need to take into consideration, like we said, we have seven hundred some lots available in the UDS. And, and portioned out over a number of years in the future here. And the housing market is in the dumpster. And, you know, we've got this stuff set in place, it's ready to go, but you may not do anything with this land for a long time.
The market dictates.
Other discussion. Any other discussion?
I just think that I hope tonight that what we're doing is correcting a mistake that was made in the Smart Growth Plan based on the fact that Averys could not tend to be concerned some health issues we had with family and therefore couldn't fight to put this particular parcel onto the Smart Growth Plan as it should have been and such. What we need to do now is to phase it in properly in order to continually confirm growth rates and at the rate at which we would lead to our citizens' needs. But to manage it is what we're talking about.
Other discussion.
I, I would just point out that, you know, frankly, I'm a little, I guess, I don't know if I guess I can say shocked anymore because of what, you know, I hear during some of these committee meetings and everything else. But I guess I'm a little disheartened that, you know, we, essentially, a, a large, you know, subcommittee that helped to shape a very huge part of our, our, our city, the Smart Growth Plan, was swayed by yelling and screaming and whining. But I guess I'm not shocked either.
I'm not shocked.
Yeah, but I, I'm disheartened with it.
I, I think that maybe that some of that, it wasn't as awful as that's-
No, really, you're right. Jeff, you're right.
Really, exactly.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, everybody's right. We, we, Gilders were upset, that was about it, I guess.
Any further discussion? Okay, the motion is to approve Plan Commission Resolution two thousand seven dash two recommending to the common council the amendment of the city's Smart Growth Plan, Comprehensive Plan by changing the land use designation of the subject property on the interim future land use map from agricultural undeveloped to walkable neighborhood. Now, this is the parcel that is in the city. Is there, any other discussion?
Roll call, please.
Have a mayor's?
Yes.
Um, the only reason why we were able to enter into a development agreement with prior projects was the fact that they were being annexed. And we, we had the leverage to say, if you want annexation, this is the development agreement that you will sign. It was negotiated, okay? But it was basically taken or leave it in terms of the city's position relative to what their obligation was. Okay? This parcel is in the city. If you change the future land use map, which I am recommending, okay? Then we don't have that leverage to say, you will enter into a development agreement with us. Because we don't have the leverage, okay? So if, if that's the intent, I, I think what we need to do is to modify the resolution to include some, some narrative to suggest or strongly recommend that that's going to be part of doing this. So there would be another whereas added to the whole resolution. And, and we can simply say, whereas the city shall enter into a development agreement with the property owner relative to the phasing of development of that parcel, of the subject property. That's, you know, depend on margins of, of, I mean, you swallow a bit, but I, I think the intent here is to work with the city in terms of phasing and to bring things online sequentially and not all at one time. My first question is the Averys, what are their thoughts on it? My first thoughts were, is that legal? I mean, my God, there's a house on one side of this property, it's been there before nineteen hundred, then there's a house on the other side, it's been there for nineteen hundred. I, I really don't understand what. I mean, I guess I'm not the right person to ask, I can feel this on the situation.
Will market demand control some of the phase?
Well, it won't control the, the building phasing, I mean, it can, it'll just control on how they sell. But if other developments have those phased-in agreements pursuant to the development agreements and subsequent to the annexation.
I could add one more thing.
Yes.
Again, you know, working through the numbers, we need to average sixty-nine building permits or dwelling units per year over the next, you know, any number of years to obtain that seven thousand population, okay? Last year and this year, we'll be lucky if we get sixty, okay? So this development alone could equal out what was not built for the last two years. They're proposing, you know, eighty. And that's what we were short for the last, you know, last year and this year. So, you know, I'll, I'll, sad.
I don't agree with Eric, maybe.
You didn't sit here when the interest rates were down and we were getting onslaughts with these particular lots. When interest rates were down, housing demand goes to a whirl. Because the numbers can be over a hundred during that time, with the existing, with existing lots at that rate now.
Correct, but we also have in place development agreements limiting all the other development projects out there. And so there is a cap. And what I'm saying is that what's going to be proposed in terms of a number of units would simply make up for what was not built last year and this year. Even if they sold them out right away, it would be less or equal to than what we anticipated for growth.
That's what's in their development agreements from their end of the year. So it would be, because they're, we're not saying that they have seventy as a cap per year. We're saying about seventy over a period of so many years is what's developed, the rolling average. So if they only sell ten, if they sell, they have ten short this year, they can make that up next year or the year after. And such.
Up to three years.
Right, up to three years.
Yeah, but I think we're ten strong in front of them to, because the average is running so low.
And wouldn't that be a great thing, now, let's reverse like apartment problem. Wouldn't it be a great thing if we had that for the construction trades in the community? If there was twenty-five high-end houses on it? For a lumberyard, for all the tradesmen that work in that business?
But, but, the other thing about it is we're restricting you and Capstone regarding number of lots open for years. Yeah, but we wouldn't be doing that for them.
What could we do is to basically say, you know, we'll change half.
There could be a land rush.
What's that?
You could, you could change half of their property, fifteen acres.
Oh, don't go too far.
No, I'm, I'm saying, I mean, that, that's an opportunity to phase-
It's not going to be feasible unless you're willing to agree to a development agreement that would in essence create that phasing and build in some flexibility.
Tim, what you're saying is that if they were to build out, all they're going to do is catch up to the, to the, to the pace of what you've, you've phased-
The Smart Growth Plan.
The Smart Growth. And asking for. So to require them to-
No, because there's a rolling agreement in place for the others.
Well, we need to hurry to catch it up though, Sandy. We may never catch it up.
Maybe here, maybe not.
But it, it could go both ways.
It could go both ways.
Could go both ways, yeah. But in the boom-boo times, we didn't exceed seventy, I don't think. And that's when interest rates were extremely low. That's how they picked it out.
Remember that this, this seventy you're talking about is based on percentage of the current population at that time. So seventy lots five years ago, when there were a population of under four thousand, is different than seventy lots of a population of five thousand, or nearly five thousand, if we are today. It's, it, the percent, the number of lots goes up as the population goes up.
No, I think it's always seventy, isn't it?
No, I mean, that we picked seventy over a three-year period, huh? Imagine the next time they're going to do it, we're going to change it to-
Oh, our, our son's by agreement was longer than that, it stayed at all that. So you're, I don't think you're right on that at all. So actually, it works in reverse because as the town grows, there's even less lots.
The other number that I, I'm hoping that'll stop, but basically, I mean, if, if you kind of walk through that, that metal like we're getting at, okay? If it shows that you need to add two hundred eighty-two dwelling units over the next twenty years to maintain the same population that you have now. Because what's happening in terms of, of trends in demographics is the household size is decreasing.
No, once again, you, 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 once again, you, you don't know the aggressive Evansville. What we have here is a, is a lot of people coming in here with starter homes. And when their kids reach the graduation grade age, or else in high school, they move back to Madison. All right, so we have a flow of people, we have a problem of retaining this, this people from their second home.
All right? Right, what I'm saying is, is that the average household size is, is decreasing nationally, statewide, in Evansville. If you look from two thousand, from nineteen ninety to two thousand, average household size is getting smaller, okay? If you carry that trend forward and it's going to continue, okay? We need to build additional dwelling units just to house the same population. Two hundred eighty-two UDS to maintain the same population, yet there's no growth. So I mean, that, that's a factor that, that I think was factored in when, when that whole discussion occurred. This is amazing, we're actually having this. I, I see this whole thing from the school district's point of view.
Yeah.
This is a, this is unbelievable, I'm hearing this. The school district's talking about kid explosions and tons of kids coming through kindergarten and first grade and everything. And we're talking about, we're going to have less people living in our houses five years from now? I, 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 I-
What's before you right now is this property.
Yes, I know.
And when you're talking about the starter home and the rolling of families with infants to eighteen-year-olds and leaving, you need to develop a property area-
Yeah, I, I know that.
Of those people that have no children or have older children and want to stay in a, in a, and feed that kind of money into the, into the rest of this community as far as how it would develop. That's what's before you right now. If you're, if there's a precedence being set here, I understand it's a concern, what you're about to do, I think. But it's a, it's a different product of the public.
Okay, we're back to the motion here. Does anyone want to make an amendment?
Yes, your honor, I'd like to make an amendment, I don't know how to word it though, but, so that we, with this product that we, that we're arranging a development agreement with the Averys, if we move forward, it must be the right. I don't know if you have a word for this though.
To phase it?
Phase it.
Uh, Tim is this close. Whereas the city shall enter into a development agreement with property owner in regards to the phasing in of developments over a period of time.
Does that do what you want?
Yes.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion on the amendment? Okay.
I don't think we need an amendment to phase it.
Hmm?
I don't think that we really need an amendment to phase it in, if what you said is true.
Is there other discussion?
What type of a phasing situation would it be?
It, it would be- It would be discussed at...
Oh, I understand, that's, what type of, what type of...